It's 5:30, we'll go ahead and begin the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for August. Call this meeting to order. The first item up is the Citizens General Discussion. This would be a chance if you want to address the commission regarding something in general about planning and zoning. So nothing, if you have something that you want to speak about that's on the agenda, it would be better to hold your discussion for after we bring that item up to discuss. But is there anybody here who would like to address the commission on any general items? All right, I'll close the Citizens General Discussion. Next up is the item, the approval of minutes. We need to consider approval of the July 16th minutes. Commissioners?
Sean Moos.
Second.
Brian and, I don't know, that was pretty close between Nick and Bonnie, so. All those in favor of approving the July 16 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on. The next item on the regular agenda is application number RZ9072. Mr. Killen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this particular item is going to have to be tabled for tonight's discussion due to some procedural issues with these submittals. So sorry for the inconvenience.
Okay. Moving on to application number PD8998. Advocate Malcolm Knute, representing Kuwaiton Developments and Rock Creek Property Number One LLC, is requesting a rezone of property located at Zero West Cedar Street, parcel R78345, being part of the A0342 Hudson HC to the City of Steamville, Routh County, Texas, from R1 Single Family Residential to PD Plan Development. The applicant will present development plan. Mr. Killen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, Mr. Knute and his team are here tonight, so once I kind of introduce this, he will be here to make some presentation comments as well. I want to start with just a little bit of, first, on what we're looking for tonight. He is asking for approval of the rezone and development plan, and so we're looking for a recommendation to the City Council relating to that which would affect his rezone request. I'm suggesting that developer return at a later time with the preliminary plat, so we can work through some items that are still somewhat pending on the submittal that is included in your packet. To provide a little bit of background, a conceptual plan was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission for this 41-acre development on July 16, and he again is asking for approval of development plan and rezoning. You might recall this property has split zoning of R1 Single Family Residential and B2 Commercial. The PD request that he is presenting is to basically deal with the R1 section of that property. How it was split zoned, I don't have the history on that, generally not something that we do on parcels. So that's unique in itself, but he is looking for a planned development for single-family housing, which will deviate some from the R1 requirements as base zoning, so I'll touch on that shortly. Again, the remainder of the property comprising the B2 or commercial portion of the property will be held for future development. To provide some information on the planned development, this is a summary from the document that Mr. Knute and his team provided, which is in your packet, and I'm sure he'll expound on it. I simply wanted to touch on the areas that I think are deviating from the R1 base zoning. And so basically, in this summary, I'm stating that it's R1 Single Family Residential is the base zoning, and that we are listing the deviations, and anything that's not listed, the developer has agreed to either meet the minimum standard or exceed the minimum standard when it comes to land use regulations for R1 base zoning. The somewhat of a table in front of you, what they are requesting compared to the standard, these are the deviations that I observed in the packet. He's asking for a maximum density of 130 lots. That is well below what we normally require, so it's not really a deviation, but I felt it was important to mention. The site plan that he's providing is actually 123 single-family lots, and then the rest would be common area lots as part of the development. In some places, green space and even park-like settings. Landscape plantings, he's asking to determine, let the owner determine the landscape plantings. Normally, we have a species list that we require that the developer uses. I don't know that he has any full intentions of deviating from that much. Generally, what we see here is that they are considering zero scape top plants instead of what is 100% on our list. He's proposing lots at 5,000 square foot with 50-foot minimum frontage. R1 Single Family is generally 75-foot lot frontage and a minimum dimension of 7,500. He's proposing 1,200 square foot living space where normally it would be 1,500 for R1. His setbacks vary from the rear setback at 10 compared to 25 on the current standard, side setbacks at 5 compared to a 7-foot side setback for interior lots and a 25-foot corner lot side setback. He's saying, his roof deck will not exceed 35 feet, that's compliant. He's asking for a waiver of parkland dedication fees, which we generally will not allow or consider at this level. That's certainly something that the commission can make a recommendation to the City Council on. Again, landscaping location to be determined by the owner. In this case, 30% of the, our landscape ordinance says 30% of the total landscaping shall be required on the frontage of the main thoroughfare, which doesn't really work when we're talking about single-family development. So not a huge deviation there, but certainly not exactly as ordinance requires. He has provided a schedule for us that would begin November 15, 2025, and then completion target date of the final residential units, January 1, 2028. To provide some staff comments, again, the standard shall apply unless the deviations have been noted, and Mr. Knute can expand on those if I've missed any. Certain modifications to preliminary plat may be required through the process. Just a point I want to make here, I'm asking that we not try to approve the preliminary plat tonight, and I've spoken with Mr. Knute about this, and I believe he's going to request different. The reason that I'm asking that we not move forward with preliminary plat is for several reasons, but if we look at, in your packet, Section 8I, there are minor changes that can be approved on a development plan for a PD, and those are on page five. And if staff looks at the preliminary plat and we see some areas that we have to make some modifications, as long as we do not trigger a major amendment to the planned development, we can continue forward as a minor amendment. Anything that's a major amendment would be something like adding additional lots or encroaching upon the parcel's boundaries and getting closer to adjacent properties than what we are showing on the site plan. So I feel like we can move forward with the site plan as part of the PD approval, but not necessarily the preliminary plat, so we can work through those areas that have not been fully determined yet. Moving through your packet, we do have, and it looks like I'm not in the right section here. Mr. Knute's done a lot of work preparing for tonight, so I want to touch on some of these things. He has written a narrative for his planned development standards. He has also provided a residential land plan. He has exhibits for fences that will be used throughout the development. He has done some, I would say, traffic impact calculations for Cedar Street based on his site plan. And then he has also, looking at your, the site plan that he's provided, Jeff, if we can find that site plan, I'd appreciate it. Looking at the site plan, he is now dedicating right-of-way for the Harbin Road extension. He's also has a secondary connection using, is it Whitefield? Whitefield Road, which is shown on the screen now. Thank you, Jeff. So at the top of the development, you'll see the gray area that's showing the Harbin right-of-way dedication, and then he's showing on the east side of that screen, if you want to look at it that way, showing that that road would extend out, connect over to Lilian using the Whitefield Extension. Again, it's 123 lots. He has one access point onto Cedar Street. Fire Department has reviewed this. The number of access points complies with their requirements. One of the things that we haven't completely fleshed out yet with the preliminary plat is making sure that that cul-de-sac on the top left-hand corner meets the fire department requirements. And so with that, Madam Chair, I think that summarizes my comments. I'll be glad to answer any questions, and again, Mr. Knute here is to provide additional input. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have questions for Steve?
So to be clear, on the Whitefield Extension, that will be built, if this is developed, it will be built immediately? It's not a future development?
I understand that will be the, one of the main access points into development to be built upon construction.
Okay.
That's part of the public improvements, yes.
And the Harbin is just a future?
It's a future connection, yes.
Okay. I think, I know the answer to this, but, but the total number of houses that he's proposing, what, under the PD, how does that differ from the amount that would, if it were just zoned R1?
Yes, ma'am. Great question, and so this is, I believe, 40, would you say 49.71 acres? So roughly 50 acres. If we talk about gross numbers, the density would be 300.
Okay.
Single-family homes, if we were talking gross numbers.
Okay.
We'd have to take out the part that's B2 commercial.
Right.
So that, let's say we were left with 45 times six. But then when you take out your roadways, there's roughly eight acres that's floodplain, roadways, easements, overhead power lines, what you net is much less than that, so.
Okay.
It's, it would be difficult for us to suggest how many homes would be there with a different layout, but what they're comparing their traffic analysis to, it would be 84 homes at 75 by 100 lots or 123 homes at the 50 by 100, so a delta of roughly 40, 40 lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
And regarding the parkland dedication, what they have proposed, the private open space, how would that compare to what a typical parkland dedication?
So generally, what we see is a per-door fee. The P&amp;Z Commission has the power to recommend land in lieu of dedication. Anything in the area that shows to be in the floodplain would not be acceptable, and there has to be a minimum of five-acre dedication per the landscape or the requirements of that particular part of the ordinance.
Okay.
So he is proposing, and I'll let Mr. Knute expand on this, but you'll see, everything in green is basically common area, but he does have some of that cut out for, I believe he's wanting to do a walking trail through the blue shaded area along the green, and then down along Cedar, he's going to have a landscape buffer with a walking trail within the landscape buffer, so. But again, I'd like to defer the details of that to Mr. Knute.
Okay. Questions?
You mentioned the preliminary plat not proceeding tonight, is that, would you mind going over that one?
So the preliminary plat generally comes with additional submittals such as drainage studies and traffic impact analysis, which he's done some work towards that. We don't know exactly how Harbin's going to connect yet, so we know he's dedicated the right-of-way. We just feel like we need to put a little bit more work behind that. The preliminary plat is generally required before a building permit is issued, so we have some time to work through those details and circle back for approval on the preliminary plat. Again, the site plan will set the parameters for the planned development. If we deviate from those parameters, we can only do it in a manner that would be a minor amendment to the PD. So we could not add lots, we couldn't, you know, expand the development at all. If we end up having to lose a couple of lots, that would be something Mr. Knute decided if he proceeded forward on.
Are entrance and exit points considered, mind you?
We know there's going to be a connection to Harbin, so the, this particular PD is only for the section shown, the area in the gray, which Sixth Street is no longer a connection point into this neighborhood, but it could be based on that stubout that they have as future planning, which you see kind of angled towards that. Not necessarily, because the adjacent property would be the one that determined if it connected to Six or not.
The Harbin connection, does someone else owns the Harbin connection though, right? That would.
That's correct.
Until, okay. So that would be temporary until.
That's a missing part of the puzzle, to your point, is that we don't know how that right-of-way is going to be released or provided to the city, how it will be dedicated, or exactly what the connection point would be. So therefore, it's, the preliminary plat's challenging to approve at this point.
The proposed pond on the, I guess it'd be the southeast corner, is that something that was added to after the fact? That, with the studies, did they have the, I guess the?
So generally, you'll have some cursory looks at detention, and with the drainage of this property, obviously, it's going towards the floodplain area. I'm sure the detention pond is to alleviate some of the drainage calculations, but I, again, would need to defer to the developer on that.
All right, is that it, Steve? Mr. Knute, would you like to come up and?
Thank you, Steve, for that review, and thank you for inviting us back. We were here 30 days ago, roughly, and with our, a plan that was slightly different than this, we made some modifications to it, all based on the input that we received at that last meeting, and also we've had numerous meetings with the city, city staff, Steve's office, Nick Williams, city engineer, Greg Schrumph, the fire marshal, and we like to think that we have done, dotted our i's and crossed our t's on this. When we met last time, there were five issues that came up that were objections. They were, number one, the effect of our development on the existing floodplain. There was concerns about stormwater runoff being increasing with increased density, with increased impervious surface, how that would affect neighboring properties, adjacent properties. There was concern for secondary northern access. There was talk of it, people wanting to see it at Harbin Street. There were safety issues on Cedar Street as a result of additional cars coming and going from the subdivision. And then there was a concern for the additional density. So I'm, we, we appreciate everybody's opinions on all of these issues, and we have researched the facts on them and met with, we have Reese Flanagan of Flanagan Engineering here. He's, I know you're all familiar with him. He is the one who has put our plan together and addressed each of these issues. I'm just real quickly going to just take two seconds on each one of them, and questions can be asked if necessary, and then Reese can back up the facts on what we've uncovered. Now, the first one, the effects on the floodplain, we are not doing anything in the floodplain. We are not touching the floodplain, not with a sidewalk, with anything. We have proposed some walking trails in the floodplain, and that was at the suggestion, mostly Barbara Horton, one of the city engineers, said that you'd be crazy not to take advantage of this beautiful property. And we've also have written in the site plan that there's proposed areas for several playing fields, whether they're soccer fields or baseball fields, basically green areas that can be utilized by people in the neighborhood, with taking careful consideration to not disturb the floodplain in any way whatsoever. There was a discussion that we had with Nick Williams and Steve's office about possibly using the floodplain for detention, and I'm not sure of the correct engineering terms that are used, but if you start moving dirt to some, a certain significant level, then it triggers a certain study, and it adds roughly 18 to 24 months onto your timeline, and we don't have that. So we've stayed 100% out of the floodplain. We've also, well, in, along with the floodplain, we spoke with Nick Williams and Reese about the increased impervious surface by the, increasing our density by an additional 30 to 40 homes, and both of them concurred, and they have the evidence to show that increased impervious surface has virtually no effect on the future stormwater runoff. With increased impervious surface, it increases the size of pipes, storm sewer, things like that. We've also added the detention pond that was just pointed out in that southeast corner, which Reese has sized it to adequately handle all of the stormwater, not just for the 120. We're at 123 lots now, but also for the future of whatever might go in that triangle that is shaded there. That, it's not up for debate whether that will be developed, it's just a question of what and at what time. But the pond he is proposing is sized for that. And the big access that was brought up by some of the locals who live along here was providing a secondary access point and eliminating one of the two accesses on Cedar Street. We have, since this first was introduced to us in, I believe, November of last year, have done everything we possibly can to come up with a Harbin Street solution, but we don't own that property. And I have reached out to the landowners on multiple occasions and are, for whatever reason, schedule's not meeting, whatever, we have not been able to even really have what I would call a meaningful discussion on that. I have met with one of the owners three months or so ago and discussed the possibilities of it. I actually spoke to him again yesterday regarding this at length. There's issues with the Harbin Street access point, though. It is extremely expensive to build. Just the extension alone is estimated on an engineer's estimate between, to be between 800 and a million-two for the access. Then there's some issues with Harbin being, and I believe it's arterial right-of-way is the correct term, and there are, there are rules that have to be followed with that. Things like you cannot have a 90-degree angle on it, you can't have a stoplight. I don't know if you can have a stop sign, things like that. So it was suggested that perhaps we put a roundabout there. I think that's a great idea. Roundabouts cost between two and a half and $2.8 million, so that's another huge expense. It's not out of the question if future development down the road is participating in it, but for 122-lot subdivision, it's absurd to think that we could even contemplate doing that plus pay for the Harbin Street extension. So with all of that in mind, for our development to move forward, we had to find a secondary access point. We talked about Sixth Street, but at best Sixth Street is going to be a right-in and right-out, and that is not for homeowners. Businesses is one thing, but for homeowners, that means they would have to loop around and do 180-degree turn and come back. It's not, it's not, it's irrelevant to our development. So we entered into an agreement with Greg Bruner to extend over the property that he has to create a secondary entrance point at Whitfield, Whitefield, Whitfield, I think it is. And it will be constructed to the city standards. I don't know off the top of my head if that is going to have 100-foot right-of-way or 75 or whatever, but it is going to be whatever the, what Reese has on the plan, and that will serve as a secondary access point. Jumping to the next issue, the safety on Cedar Street, we did engage a licensed traffic engineer named Kelly Parma, I believe is his name. Reese is the one who introduced us to him. He did preliminary calculations of what the increase in traffic counts will be from going from an 80, 80 to 123-lot subdivision, now he originally did it at 131. And the increase in traffic is minuscule, and the number Steve has, the counts, I've submitted his traffic counts to him with a summary of peak entrance and exit hours. The additional homes will add, I don't have it in front of me, it's over there, but roughly, say, 26 additional movements at the peak hour in the morning and in the evening, which is 16 leaving in the morning and 10 coming back into the subdivision and vice versa in the evening. It's roughly one every four minutes, and as he said in traffic speak, it's miniscule. It's obscure to the point where it's inconsequential. He also looked at Cedar Street and said, you know, the problem you have with Cedar Street is, and the city has explained this to me, they adopted Cedar Street, or inherited, I think is a better word. It was a county road, and it has virtually no improvements on it. It is a narrow road, it doesn't have striping on it, it doesn't have warning signs, it has overgrown vegetation. Mr. Parma has made recommendations of things that can be done to Cedar Street in the short term to improve it while plans are made to expand Cedar Street. You have a 212-acre parcel right down the way that is approved for R2.5, which you can get 950 homes on it. So Cedar Street is going to have to be addressed. We are dedicating the right-of-way in excess of what the city is asking for. We'll be the first people to dedicate right-of-way on a road that has no right-of-way. So I think we're doing our fair share there, and then if you look at Mr. Parma's results after his studies, it's very conclusive that the additional traffic that going to our planned development versus R1 is very, very miniscule. Mr. Parma couldn't be here tonight, but when we go to the City Council on September 2, he will be here to answer any questions that people in the council have for him. he will be here to answer any questions that people in the council have for him. The last issue was it, the increased density. Obviously, we're developers and are, we're here to make money. There's also another thing that comes into play here, and that is what is the market dictate that it wants right now? And right now, it doesn't matter, it's not just Stephenville, it's every city around the metroplex and in the metroplex. The R1 lots are not being developed anywhere. That is not what the market is. The market is smaller homes on smaller lots, affordability. It's painfully obvious in Stephenville that there is not affordable housing here in town. I think we have a better pulse than anybody in Eret County, what the market is dictating in Stephenville because of our development on Harbin Street. I've told Steve repeatedly, we have ten, twelve people a week that come and look at our townhomes over there because they see the price on Realtor.com, and they try to figure out a way to make a detached, single-family homework for a small family, and it doesn't work for what they want. They want a small house on a small lot that they can fence in and have their dog, put a pool in, a playground, you know, whatever they want to do for their kids. And that's not just Stephenville, that's all across the metroplex. Reese will tell you, he has thousands of lots in development in others, in other areas, all of which are the reduced size. So yes, we need the numbers because land values have not come down. We are paying a premium for this property. The price of construction has not come down, the price of labor has not come down. If Stephenville wants to have a subdivision here, it's gonna have to have a hundred and twenty-three homes in it to make it feasible. We can absorb the extra cost of the development because we're also going to be building the homes. So it's, we can build a retail price into the cost of our homes and make it all wash at the end. But that is the reason, it's, it's twofold. We need the density, and that's what the market is. That is why we are here for a planned, planned development versus staying with R1. And we also went with the planned development because I'm well aware of what happened, uh, on previous proposals on this property and other properties in Stephenville. And I've told Steve, we have always been a hundred percent transparent on everything we do. It's why I want the, I'm, I did not remove the vote for the preliminary plat on here because we have shown everything, we have given the city everything they've asked for on that plat, and there's very little that we can change to make this work. We wanted to show the lot count, the lot sizes, the type of fencing. I apologize, I don't have architecture, our architect is behind. I was hoping to have elevations that I could show everybody here today. We have put walking trails in the utility enhancements, we have added a landscape buffer along Cedar of twenty feet, we have added a six-foot minimum semi-privacy fence that will act as a buffer. And in our plan, our standards, I think I listed that we're gonna put seventy-five to a hundred deciduous, and trees and bushes in there to create, to create the landscaping buffer as well as the fence. And we're putting a five-foot wide walking trail through there as well, so you can, and it will connect to the existing walking trails. In addition to that, we also have an area shaded in, in the upper, uh, that would be the northwest corner, that is going to be a designated dog park. It will be fenced, it'll have facilities to dispose of the nasty part of a dog park, um, it'll be a gathering place for everybody in the neighborhood, which is also extremely popular in smaller subdivisions like this. Because of that, that is, those, the green areas, the walking trails, that's why we have asked for a waiver of the Parkland dedication with, that's just an ask, it's not a demand. Again, Steve touched on the fact that he is not recommending that we seek a vote on the preliminary plat for approval. However, we would like to the commission to still consider it. The big unknown on the plan right now, and it just was brought to my attention again just recently, is what is Harbin Street gonna look like in the future? Well, we've had, been talking about that with the city for six months. And it was suggested by Jason King, the city manager, that the future of Harbin follow the, the comprehensive plan for the arterial right-of-way, which is why it is sitting on the northern border of the property. We put it right, we put it in right where at the suggestion of the city manager. Now there's discussion of it possibly coming down more onto our property. There also has to be discussions with the landowner who own the land that the Harbin Street's gonna go through. These are discussions that, these are not decisions that are gonna be made in thirty days. These are decisions that involve other developers, it involves city staff, it involves land planners and engineers. This is a, in my opinion, an eighteen-month to two-year process to come up with, where is Harbin Street gonna go? We have dedicated the right-of-way, it will be part of our, our final plat, and, um, the, which is what we were, we were counseled to do. We have also, like I said, we've given the right-of-way to Cedar Street, we've got the secondary access, we've got the green areas. The last thing is the floodplain. There is one caveat here that's very big for the city, the floodplain is a big issue. We met with Nick Williams on this, and we discussed Fries and Nichols floodplain study that they did a number of years ago. And you have a, you have a big floodplain problem here, everybody knows that. The residents were very vocal about that at the last meeting. However, this pro, this property is not causing that, and we are eliminating that portion of it that could be affected. It is our intention, that's roughly nine and a half acres that's zoned, it's shaded in in blue there, and I've, I've mentioned this to Nick when we were meeting with him, that to me, a so long-term solution to, to the current floodplain problem is start coming up with a plan on how to solve it. And I think a great way to start that is for us to dedicate that nine and a half acres to the city, so they own it, and they can now say, okay, we've got a upstream and a downstream problem, but we have almost ten acres right in the middle. Perhaps that's future retention, perhaps that is manipulating the floodplain to handle more volume, to slow the flow down. If the city owns it, they can start solving the problem. So it is, it, I know I didn't, Steve didn't present anything formal on that, but that is what our intention is with that. So I'm open to any questions, if anybody has them?
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Canute?
What was your average asking price gonna be on this?
We're hoping that, um, we're, our homes are gonna range in size from probably just under thirteen-hundred square feet to probably two-thousand at the largest. We are anticipating the larger homes to be two-stories. Um, we built several smaller two-stories here in Stephenville that, uh, were extremely popular when we were building them, allows us to maximize the square footage. We're hoping to keep our initial asking prices somewhere around three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, and we expect the high-end in the subdivision. At this point, I mean, inflation, changing markets and everything dictate ultimately where it is, but my crystal ball tells me the absorption is what I believe it's going to be, and this will be built out in probably two years or just under. We will probably be for the high-end homes in the low four hundreds.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Canute, appreciate it. All right, I'm now gonna open a public hearing, if anybody wishes to speak in favor of this PD or against this PD, we will begin. I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, uh, read through the sheets I've been given. If you have not filled one of these out, please do so if you wish to speak. We're gonna begin with Wayne Hancock, you have three minutes. And please cite your, um, address for the audience.
Um, my name's Wayne Hancock, I'm the minister at the Cross Timber Church of Christ, fifteen-fifteen West Cedar Street. I spoke last time, I'm curious, I mean, see the change in the plan for the Whitefield Road, I don't know if that actually solves traffic problems along the curve, um, it just makes people pulling out in front of people coming around a curb, and that's really not that far of a distance from that exit to, uh, where the curve is. We were also never, that Whitefield butts to our property, I believe, um, and so we were never even informed about this, I'm, maybe I can't answer the questions probably, but just curious what that's gonna look like, um, and have concerns about that. Also, again, with such, so many houses being developed in such a small neighborhood, we have an open parking lot, but while we want to welcome any residents there, we don't want to be overflow parking. And so I have a major concern about there being not enough parking in these developments for this number of houses. Those are our primary concerns.
Thank you, sir. Scott Randolph.
Hi, my name's Scott Randolph, fifteen-oh-six Whitefield Street. Uh, we are the little road that they wanna turn into an entrance. Been here for twenty years, um, I'm all for Stevenville growth, I was here last time opposing, the last thing that was here. I believe that R1 is what we need over there, I'd love for it to stay R1. Um, I don't fully understand the Whitefield, um, entrance. It really, I mean, are they gonna have to widen that street? If they do that, do we know? Cause I mean, as of now, you put two cars on that, on that road parked on each side, which is usually a daily occurrence, you can't really get much through. Long story short, it's just not a great idea for an entrance. I would ask that, you know, we don't do this until we can get something with Harbin. It's just sitting there waiting for a nice road to come into. I believe a neighborhood that probably will happen, I'd love it if it was R1, and, uh, I think it's great for Stephenville. I, I do not think this is really it, it's hopefully going to get there. Um, I do, I would like to see how this would play into the twenty, is it the twenty-fifty comprehensive plan, um, how this would actually directly affect our neighborhood. I don't see, especially with an artery dumping into our neighborhood, it affecting it in a positive manner. I mean, humans take the path of least resistance, so they're not gonna go around Cedar Street and get to their house, they're gonna pull off Lillian, they're gonna scoot around that little Whitefield Road, and they're just gonna book it, um, into the neighborhood. When you have a hundred and fifty homes and a planned development of who knows what, it's gonna be a lot of cars. Uh, I got two small boys that use that road every day for bikes, basketball, whatever. Uh, we chose that road specifically because we liked that it's a little dead end, we knew at some point it might change. I hope that, uh, this isn't it. I, I just, I really urge just to really iron out a Harbin Street solution and not to go for the Whitefield, um, uh, the Whitefield access, but that's about all I got, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Um, I neglected to mention, we have also received three letters in opposition email and then one hard copy, correct?
That's correct, yes, ma'am. Those were sent out earlier today by Mrs. Jan, and I believe she has copies of the, of the hard copy available for the commission.
Um, next up, Nathan Collier.
Hello, Nathan Collier, uh, I'm living at sixteen-twenty Cedar Street, so I'm directly south and further southwest, so I'm, my property is that whole corner there, south of this property that makes, that's all the way to the end, that bin that goes south. I'm the direct recipient of all the drainage that comes off there, and I spoke last month about that. I do appreciate all the, uh, changes, there was very thoughtful changes made to the property and amendments, um, a lot of great things that I think were amended to, to make it a more of a successful property, and I do appreciate that. Like was already said, and I think will continue to be repeated today, I think a lot of thought has gone into it. The infrastructure surrounding this property is just not there yet. And I know that he is talking about density, um, for this property, and I understand that he's here representing this property, but you all are representing the city of Stephenville in the larger picture, that's what you're charged with. And it is this property and future R1 or R2 and a half developments, the two-hundred-and-fourteen acres, I believe?
Two-twelve, yes.
Yeah. So there is, uh, there's a larger regional picture here, so I know that he says, well, for this, um, traffic study and other things, it is minimal, but it is cumulative, and the infrastructure is not there yet. So is Harbin, and I don't know this, this is rhetorical, is Harbin a eighteen-month solution, or is it a nine-year solution? Um, the Whitefield Road and Cedar Street, like, the, the infrastructure is clearly not there yet. And other properties will get developed on the south side of town, um, and Harbin may or may not come to fruition. And so I do believe that from a, a, um, from a larger city perspective, which y'all should have, we have to be cognizant of, is the infrastructure ready for this? And it's just not there yet. Uh, I do appreciate the drainage concerns, I am the recipient of that, I do hope the city does address that, I know that's not this meaningful, this discussion now, um, but the water, I will just repeat, the water issue has gotten more severe on my property. It has clearly gotten more severe, and is continuing to do that. But that's my comment, is that the infrastructure is, is not there yet, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Steve Keck.
I'm Steve Keck, I live at fourteen-fifty Melissa Drive, and I'm, I'm concerned about the, the loading, the crowding of our neighborhood. It, it's, when you get, Whitefield is in the middle of the three roads that we have, Melissa, uh, Whitefield and, uh...
Kallock.
Kallock, yeah. Lockwood, yeah. But those three streets already have multiple cars parked on them, on both sides, and if you make that no parking, it's gonna not be able to just load one side too, but it's gonna really overload our streets. And I haven't seen a lot of safety concerns about walking pedestrians right now, there's no, no sidewalks in our neighborhood, and if we develop more, let's, let's look at pedestrian safety with that. And I, I believe that, that unless you get Harbin built and extended, it's gonna be a real big mess out there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Deice Howell.
Hello, I'm Deice Howell, my husband Kenneth and I live at sixteen-ten West Cedar, we also own the property at fifteen-sixty Cedar, and then two properties on Kallock. We're both lifetime residents of Stephenville, and I'd like to thank y'all for this, I know this is a lot y'all have to listen to, but we strongly support a true R1 single-family owner-occupied development on this property with the north exit and entrance. This would maintain the integrity of the current surrounding neighborhoods. The houses in the Lockwood addition average starting fourteen to fifteen-hundred square feet and go up. The Alexander Ridge addition, which is just right behind that, starts seventeen to eighteen-hundred and up. Stephenville needs developments for families, not students. This proposed project is just another color for student housing. Twelve-hundred square foot is not much bigger than an apartment, which will attract investors to invite, to buy these for rentals for students and parents purchasing these for their students while attending Tarleton students. In the twenty-nine years we have lived in our home, the problems on Cedar continue to increase every year. We all know the problems with Cedar Street, we've discussed it many times. Can't handle the traffic flooding, which this would increase, not wide enough for current traffic, but this has now added Whitefield Street coming out on Lillian, which has its own set of problems currently, and it will create more. And I don't think the city has the money to fix any of these streets, I think that's been a discussion in the past. This project has its own issues, but one of the largest is the proposed football-slash-soccer field. This is located at the entrance at Cedar Street. There's no designated parking, which would they spill out onto Cedar, that's a question. Are there going to be lights put up around this field, which will shine into our homes that are currently there on Cedar Street? In the upper right-hand corner of the property, which shows future development, this developer on one of his previous last month showed townhouses going in there, is that what's going to be the future development? Those are just questions, I know y'all don't know, I was just putting those. The two-hundred-and-twelve acres that are past this property to the west has already been approved of R2, and the only road access to that property is Cedar Street, which is still a very much a concern for all of us on that, on Cedar and Lillian, and the added traffic from this development will put much more stress on that street. I would like to know the date of the traffic study done, that is in this report, the previous traffic study done for a project on this property previously was done while Tarleton and Stephenville ISD were out for the summer. I think that skews the numbers and doesn't give us an accurate accounting of, of that event. I do have concerns that seems to be a reoccurring. Someone decided with this city that we needed standards set when, for properties to be developed. I assume studies were done, maybe engineers involved, taxpayers' money for cost, and standards were set for the sizes of lots, square footage for structures, setbacks for back and front property lines, street sizes, height of buildings, what type of landscaping, and location of landscaping. My question is, why are the developers not being held to these standards but allow exceptions in a planned development proposal? Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Penny Hampton.
Penny Hampton, 1411 Harper's Mill Road, and my parents live on Kalock Street. Thank you guys for listening to us. I know some of you have heard us a couple of times, so I'll try to summarize some of what I was going to say and put it into other things. You know, other people can talk about the drainage concerns way better than I can, but I think one thing that he said when he talked about the infrastructure is maybe the most important. I think this, the, all the things that are needed in place for something like this development to happen are not in place yet. The Harbin Street may or may not happen. There's no guarantees. Until you can get something like that, get more information on that, this is really a premature conversation. Trying to put so many things, I strongly oppose, in case I haven't already said that, changing it from its current zoning restrictions, because they're there, because this is a rural residential area. The, the Whitefield thing, I gotta say, anybody that would make that suggestion hasn't driven down that street, because you cannot drive two vehicles down it at the same time. And what she said about the traffic studies and minor, I mean, just coming out of Alexander Ridge, because I used to live on Kalock, now I come out, that subdivision, Alexander Ridge, there's more, and I'm glad they did develop that, because I live in it, but it is an R1 restriction, but there's a lot of traffic that started in that area from that. So any kind of development is going to. And so I know that he also emphasized that he appreciated the opinions that were offered, but I will say these opinions are offered by residents who have lived with the reality for, some of us were for 50 years. So those opinions are based on facts. For me, it comes down to safety. Leaving the Cedar Street and the Whitefield entrances, there are, nobody's mentioned school buses, nobody, they've mentioned kids, they've mentioned other things. Those school buses go through there, no one else can go through there. And a college kid's going to round that corner and hit that and not necessarily see that school bus that's parked right there on that corner, because it is, I've seen it recently. I'm concerned about the safety for, and then for the residents in the area, for Steenville at large. I do think they're, the negatives far exceed the positives. The only positives really come down to the person who owns the land and the developers and the potential Tarleton students that will live there. I know that we need growth, and I'm not opposed to growth, but I think putting that in place before you have the infrastructure to support it is really not thinking about the safety of the residents that live there. So my plea would, for you would be to, and again, I do think he made some adjustments based on things from where we were before, but looking to cram as many people in one area that is a rural residential area that jeopardizes the safety of the current citizens, to me, is not what we should be looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jill McAngus.
I'm Jill McAngus. We live on 891 Private Road 1424, which is the private road that's right across from where this would go in. And I think we've had a lot of, like, I agree with everything that everybody said, so I don't have really much new. I would just encourage you to understand that we really need a north exit and entrance into anything that goes there. And if we don't have Harbin established and we don't have a plan for Harbin or we don't have a plan for that road, this is not a good idea. And really, my, it comes for me from safety off Cedar, Cedar Road and Whitefield. I mean, and I would really encourage you to drive those roads at like four o'clock when kids get out of school and they're all playing basketball in the streets. Like, if you drive down there and you see all of the children that are playing in these residential areas that are rural areas, and then you imagine all of the cars that are rounding and all of the new traffic that's about to happen, like, it is, I'm telling you, it's a disaster waiting to happen. There really needs to be an entrance that is on the north side, and I really encourage it to stay in R1 instead of a planned development, and that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else here who wishes to speak? Thank you, sir.
So my name is Alan Mays, and I live at 1457 Melissa Drive. And really, I don't know that I have a lot to add other than to echo the sentiments of what have been said already, especially looking at how Whitefield, again, is a very, very small street, so to say that that is going to be improved to alleviate any traffic problems, it doesn't seem feasible unless you're actually going through all of Whitefield Street. And on top of that, you still add to Lillian a huge amount of traffic, because basically it is the only outlet to the South Loop from that entire subdivision. And as it is right now, that side of Lillian, again, it's one of those situations where you park one car on one side and one on the other, and you've seriously restricted flow to really one car at a time in either direction. It's just not capable of handling that, and the plan as it sits right now stands to create that as the only outlet for the subdivision. So again, something long-term with Harbin seems to be the only reasonable solution to alleviate that. If you go into those, the subdivisions along Melissa, Lockwood, and Kalock, there are families there. There are families that are active in the evenings, and you're looking at increasing traffic. The only other outlet then would be all the way to Alexander, and so you're looking at traffic flowing all the way across Lockwood, you know, at, at times when families are leaving or, or arriving, and creating a whole lot of traffic through an area that is very much a, a family-oriented area. So again, the infrastructure, I just, I just don't see the infrastructure being able to support that large number of, of homes at this time, especially ones that don't meet the city standards of not only R1 but R1.5. So I, I think that pretty much sums up. We just, really, there needs to be a long-term solution to providing the infrastructure necessary to support this type of, of development or any type of future development in that particular area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Somebody else who wishes to speak? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and commissioners, I, we need a motion. And keep in mind the question of preliminary plat.
I recommend denial of, did we recommend the counsel of RZ 907, I'm sorry, 8998.
Second.
Okay, let's discuss.
Well, he pointed out himself, Mr. Kneut, about the road, the Cedar Street's somewhat atrocious, and I would say, well, many of the roads unfortunately in Steenville are, and we don't have striping on many of those streets, Melissa, Kalock. I don't think any of those streets have striping. So we, we know there's a problem that exists, and if we just proceed, we're just pushing it to the side.
Other discussion?
I think they've done their homework, and I think the thing that is problematic is Harbin Drive, and it comes down to infrastructure. And I hope everybody here has pointed that out multiple times. I think this is now a city issue that needs to be addressed, and had the infrastructure been there, I think this would have been a good plan.
Looks like we're ready to vote? I don't even know if I need to do a roll call.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we, yeah, we've, we've moved on.
I tried to get your attention quite this morning, just a couple of names.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We've closed the public hearing. Commissioners, I'll go ahead and do a roll call. Tyler, the, as it stands, it's a recommend of denial?
Yes, deny.
Justin?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Brian?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. As you know, this is not your final step. You will move on to city council, so this will be a recommendation to cancel or to counsel to deny this planned development?
Can I just, can I point out one quick thing here before we leave? I accept a vote. I told Steve if we get a no vote, it is what it is. Everybody here is hugging him up, we need to improve infrastructure. I know, I understand that. I'm just, okay, I'm on board, I'll keep my mouth shut. We are just looking forward to helping improve the infrastructure.
We understand. We understand. I'm sorry, sir. You'll, you can address this with city council in their next meeting. All right, thank you all for being here. You're welcome to stay and continue to enjoy this lovely meeting or go on and get your dinner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Advocate William Lambert is requesting a rezon of property located at 1385 Swan, parcel R33529, being S6200, South Side Edition, block 10, lots 2 and 3 of the city of Steenville, Eroth County, Texas, from industrial to R3 multiple-family residential. Steve.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, we're asking for a recommendation for the rezoning request. Under the Steenville 2050 comprehensive plan, the future land use is designated as community core. On the second page of your staff report, community core allows for a mix of uses, including medium-density housing with a diverse housing type, and then also local businesses connecting on thoroughfares within that type of future land use. I don't know exactly what the intentions are with the rezone. He didn't mention on his application what his, his project is going to be, but obviously R3 is limited to a pretty narrow use of permitted uses, so I'm assuming he's thinking of putting a five-unit building on this parcel. If you look at the current zoning, you see that he's one industrial parcel in the C of R3, and so the future land use map next to the current zoning is under the 2008, but the future land use for the 2050, as I mentioned, is community core. So with that, Madam Chair, be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Steve? And the developer is, I assume, not here tonight?
Do not see anyone present.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is anybody here wish to speak in favor or against this rezon request? Close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Make a motion that we recommend counsel approval of case number RZ 9037.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of recommending to counsel approval of this rezon request, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Moving on, application number FP 9070. Advocate J.T. Hale, representing Encore Electric Delivery, is requesting
Thank you, Captain.
...approval of a final plat of the property located at 2450 West Lingaville Road, parcel R78331, being approximately 10.01 acres of the A0520 Menifee Jarrett of the city of Steenville, Eroth County, Texas. Mr. Killen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, so this is final plat, doesn't move on to city council, it's approval here tonight. We're asking for a conditional approval. My apologies to the Encore folks that had to sit through a pretty long meeting for a pretty simple task. We're asking for conditional approval. We have the nine conditions listed there. Been working with Ms. Wilson and Mr. Hale on this for the past few days, maybe a couple of weeks or more. We pretty well have most of these met by the time that we got to this meeting tonight, so I think the conditions will be quickly resolved and they will be ready to move forward to recordation with the county. But we'd be glad to answer any questions. I am asking that it be approved with conditions, just for clarification. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Steve? All right, open up to a public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak in favor or against this replat request? Final plat, sorry? Closing the public hearing. Commissioners, we need a motion and remember the conditions.
I recommend that we approve FP 9070 with conditions.
Second.
All those in favor of approving this plat, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Done. Thank you all. Appreciate you being here. Finally, our last item, application number FP 9086 and FP 9087. Advocate Reese Flanagan, representing Troy Kunkel of Tarleton Walk LLC, is requesting approval of final plat for parcel R78299, being phase one of Lillian Park Town Homes, and parcel R33522, being block eight, lot 5678, and block 14, part of the lot five of the South Side Edition to the city of Steenville, Eroth County, Texas. Mr. Killen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, you might recall this, this property was for the development of R2.5 single-platted townhomes off of Lillian and Swan. It began with Mr. Pace, and then it was acquired by Troy Kunkel. He finished up the additional phases when Mark Pace final-plated the phase one. So you've seen this on a couple of different, a couple of different times through preliminary plats and final plats. Mr. Kunkel has now wrapped up his project. This is the final step for completion of his project by approving the final plat. We only have four conditions listed, and they have been working with this as well, and upon verification that these conditions have been met, they'll be ready to move to the county courthouse to record the plat. With that, Madam Chair, recommending approval of the final plat with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve? I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor or against this plat? Closing the public hearing. Commissioners?
I recommend that we approve FP 9086 and 9087 with conditions.
Second.
All those in favor of approving this plat, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I think I just need a motion to adjourn.
No, please adjourn.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for staying. Appreciate it.
That was it?